I'm sitting with Hammer.
Good evening. Calling to order the Columbia County Board of Commissioners, November 21st, 23 meeting to order. Would please bow your heads for imprecation. Gracious heavenly Father, we just praise you and thank you for who you are and thank you for the blessings you bestow. On Columbia County and the greater Augusta region, pray that you bless all our first responders and all those who are downrange protecting our freedoms. I do offer a special prayer for Israel today as I always think of the event they had to go through and I pray for those folks, the families of their hostages, Father, that you would work that out, bless them. Father, we just pray for that country's protection. I pray now that you'd bless our meeting, bless the decisions needed to be made. Christ's name, amen. Please stand for the pledge.
Pledge allegiance to the flag, United States, public, God, visible.
The records show we have a full quorum of commissioners. You have the minutes from the November 7th, 2023, meeting in your package. If you had a chance to review them, I'll accept a motion to approve it.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to accept as presented. Second?
All in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries. And as well, you have the minutes from the November 7th executive session.
I'd like to make a motion to accept as presented. Second?
Any questions? All in favor, raise your right hand. Carries. I see no presentations. I know we have a special recognition. Who is handling that? Oh, I accept the agenda.
Appreciate a little bit of time in front of you. My name is Dave Olson. I run the Savannah River Mission Completion, the waste contractor. I was last in front of you about 10 years ago. Is that the site? Left for 10 years ago, other places back again based on?
Smart move.
Charlotte and back again running this job. So I was going to work you through with the 400 or so folks, 400 or so folks that are part of our team and what we're about there. So I ran the waste contractor the last time I was here, went to Washington State for a while, back here to start our company in February of 2022. We're one of six entities at the site, the ones that do the waste cleanup, not the weapons people, but the ones that program. Seen these companies before. I meant them BWXT and Fluor. I'm actually a Fluor employee, headquarter actually, attended to the LLC to run this job. Couple of small businesses that from the local area here supporting us. About 3,700 people, 15-year contract. We're in the year two and we're about a billion dollar a year, hold like that for the next decade or so. And we're thankful that the continuing resolution went through. Don't have to worry about that at least for another two months or so. Hopefully they'll get that together. What we do is we take waste generated from nuclear materials activities over the years. It looks like peanut butter, pancake syrup, table salt. I wouldn't recommend you holding your hands. That's what it looks like physically and we get it out of tanks and then treatment facilities. Fifty-one tanks the size of small basketball gymnasium, they put underground and whole-sized cupboards to get the equipment, get the waste stirred up for a tree. Six different operating plants on the center of Savannah River site that we operate. All are up and running. All are integrated well. Upper left-hand side, the oldest that dates to the early 50s. Bottom left-hand side, the newest that dates to about four or five years ago. We literally are still trying to buy parts on eBay.
And you're like disposing of nuclear waste.
We are, yeah. Go figure. Employees, the same kind of things you'd see at any industrial complex in the CSRA, variety of work that they do, hands-on, computerization, control systems, construction and the like. And no quiz on this one, just as everything is interconnected, interwoven, working together to have waste go a variety of directions here to get to. Low-level waste goes into a grout form and we pour it into the size of water tower tanks for a small town built on the ground, not a resting place. The higher level adducted waste goes into glass and steel canisters for babysitting until government decides that a repository somewhere that's safe for multiple generations in that. Left-hand side, we keep a scorecard how we're doing. And 14 years to go in this mission, hell of a waste cleaned up. On the left-hand side is the high-level waste that goes into glass forms and those canisters are about halfway down there, 4,400 out of 8,000. Middle of the slide is the low-level waste that goes into a grout form. On the bottom there shows the 12 big water tank-sized vessels that we're pouring it into making grout. And we're getting to the point on the right-hand side where the 51 tanks, eight are closed. There's 43 left to go to get waste out clean and close. The end state is like you've had a concrete simple in your backyard, didn't want to use it, filled up with concrete, grass it over. That's what ours will look like. Eight of those 51 are cleaned, concrete poured back in them. Operate under a federal facilities agreement for fire metal control. We revise that in December of 22 with the South Carolina regulator, Georgia regulator supporting, as well as EPA region for out of Atlanta. Priority for the next 14 years is work things and risk. Works the waste, get it done first with tanks that are in rough spots, get those done first. Everybody's agreed to that. Of those 43 that remain, 16 of those are what's called non-compliant. Bad term in the world, but all it means they don't have full containment around them. They're like a, tanks like a coffee cup on a saucer, that's the kind of containment, or a Coke can with a koozie, that kind of containment. Can leaked or the saucer leaked catches a little bit of, not all of it. There are 16 that are still like. The other 27 are like a coffee can, coffee cup and a Tupperware. And our investment in the community, my parent companies give us money to spend back in the community. Of this, of the subcontract work we do, that, of that billion dollars, spent last about 180 million of that on subcontract work. I'm required to have half of that be small business. That, we beat that last year, 150 million, all business. Several in the local area here, shown in Columbia County and 400 or so employees that come from this county. Doing a lot as well with STEM education, investment in the, doing some scholarship winners from, winners from the area here. Then we got this trademarked, thing, activity to get something trademarked through the US office. Just our phrase, power as one. Power of one, you've heard that before. Power as, I mean, everything together, not duplicative, not redundant, not underutilized, but work together. And at a time where we're very divisive societally, I want to do a proof of 3700. All ahead. I'm from Minneapolis originally, so I still talk fast. I've been there 42 years.
Okay, you enunciate your sentence. So you'll be, you'll finish the project in 15 years or?
2037, we should be done at the end of this current contract.
Okay, multiple generations. How long is the product once you've encased it, 100 years?
Waste in glass is good forever. Steel canisters that it's housed in will fail first and the building they're sitting in will fail. So something else, but the glass is fine for integrated in physically to the glass making. Even I could walk up next to it, help their hands on it because they're safe in there.
Thank you for the time and thank you for the information and for the 400 people you employ that live in Columbia County.
Thank you much.
Commissioners, you have the consent agenda in front of you. Each item on this agenda has been through the necessary committees and received votes to be placed on this agenda. They still, still meet with your approval except all.
Chairman, I make a motion to accept the consent agenda as presented. Second?
Questions? All in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries. On to you, Commissioner Malier.
Make a motion to approve the first reading of Resolution Number 23-51 to amend the fee schedule for the Columbia County Health Department environmental fees. Second?
Can I just explain?
Yes, so this is a request for the Health Department. Actually, the Board of Commissioners is responsible for setting these fees. We did get fees from the Health Department Board. We did kick this back, I believe, last meeting for them to look at. We did get a letter stating that the fees were in line with the services that they provide. So staff has brought it back.
Questions? Motion second, all in favor, raise your right hand. Carries. Commissioner Skinner?
I'm RZ1101. Make a motion to approve. Motion 0616, now approved. R2 zoning district.
This property is currently zoned S1 for a personal care home. They are looking to go back and use it as a residential property. However, BR2, they are required to hook to sewer, a common theme you will hear tonight. There is not sewer here. This house is currently on a septic system. So they are looking to go to a, buys S1 that allows R2 uses. Also reduce the setback. As you can see here, the house does not meet current setbacks for Herford Road. It also does not meet setbacks for Meadow Lane. So approving these setbacks will be for this building. There's also a caveat in there that if this building is demolished, it can be rebuilt back in the exact same place. But any kind of expansion would have to come back for a commission review and approval.
Questions? The motion is second, all in favor, raise your right hand.
Make a motion to best for a reason. S1, properly located.
This is a request to go from R1 to S1. Currently, there is a personal care home that is operating under the R1 zoning. They have six patients, okay, patients, residents or less, and the owner resides in the house. They're looking to go to S1 to allow up to 12 residents and the owner would not have to live there at that point. They will also have to get approval from the Health Board to basically tell them the number of residents they can have. We're saying 12. If the state comes back and says 15, they're still limited to 12. If the state comes back and says six, they're limited at six. So the state kind of holds the key on, on how many they can have as well as the commission. So we're setting our limit at 12. If you were to approve this, the state would then come back and set their limit. They'll have to go through building plan modifications to fire code if they were to go through. Have to answer any other questions you have.
The business owner would not be required to live.
Would not be required to live.
Questions? There's a motion, second on the floor, all in favor, raise your right hand. Carries. Mr. Thomas Weiss? Please state your name and address for the record and please, five minutes, sir.
Sir, good evening. My name is Thomas Weiss. I live at 269 Forest Drive, right around the corner from this property we're discussing tonight. As I mentioned to the Planning Commission on 2 November, this type of zoning from R2 to R1 is something that this county never sees. When the proposal came up during the Planning Commission, the signs were posted on the roads near our homes. Went back and I looked at 10 years of minutes from the Planning Commission. I didn't see a single request for an R2, R1 zoning. It just doesn't happen here in the county. Based upon the information that was available to the public for the 2 November Planning Commission meeting, there were basically two options presented. One option was to build five homes, about one acre lots using septic. If that was not approved, then the developer stated the property could not be developed because it was not planned. Now, additional documentation was presented to the public last Friday regarding this meeting, and there was an additional option placed in there. But based off talking to a couple neighbors and opinions of myself, that looked at three possible options for this property. Option number one is that the rezoning from R2 to R1 is approved by this commission, five homes on approximately one acre with septic are built. Now, there's some advantages to this. Obviously, five homes are better than 13 homes. Less is better. Builder makes, makes money, makes a profit on it, and then actually the county receives additional tax revenue that it may not be receiving today. Disadvantage to that option is that this commission would need to disapprove recommendations of the Planning Commission, Water and Sewer Department, and the Environmental Department regarding possible environmental and public health concerns. Option two, the rezoning from R2 to R1 is disapproved by this commission, 13 homes are built on approximately one quarter-acre lots connected to the sewer. Some of the advantages to this option are builder still makes a profit, but maybe not as significant as option number one, and the county still receives additional tax income. The disadvantages some of the neighbors saw to this option is 13, you have 13 homes built on six and a half acres, which is authorized under R2 zoning. But in this area right now, when I define area, I'm looking north of Day Road and also the homes along Summer Place. There are 20 homes in this area right here, currently on 92 acres of property. Option number three that we looked at was the rezoning from R2 to R1 is potentially disapproved by this commission. The developer makes the decision not to build because it's not financially feasible. The obvious advantage to this is the property remains the same. Maybe one day the property is sold to an individual who builds one or two. Disadvantages to this option is the family that currently owns the property would like to sell. So as I talked about this with a couple of the neighbors, what they kind of came up with is they looked at, if they could make a decision on these three options, this is how they would rank them. Option number three, don't build. Option number two, build five homes. Option number three, build 13 homes. Now, this is an emotional issue for a lot of folks in the area. Some of these folks have lived there for 40 years. They're worried about the trees coming down and potentially loss of wildlife. Those are emotional issues and really don't carry a lot of weight in the decision-making process. What does carry a lot of weight in this decision-making process are the proposals, codes, the ordinance, the rules, the laws, and the policies of this county. Any, any questions? That's all I have to say. Thank you for your time. Sir?
Ron Lewis?
Chairman, Vice Chairman?
The record and please take five minutes.
My name is Ron Lewis. I live at 3056 Leaning Oak Way in Martinis, Georgia. I am the applicant for, for the rezoning change. My initial motivation, when I started this process about nine months ago, was to, to build five or six homes there on one-acre lots. I was told in the Planning Department after a few days back and forth that it was zoned R2 currently. And after an initial indication I could downzone it, I was told that I would have to, that I couldn't downzone it, that I would have to, to develop under R2 because there was a, an ordinance that said that it was within 200 feet of a sewer line that I would have to, to connect to that. So at that point, I regrouped, had, we did have, or I did have a development plan developed with a, in, in that particular scenario with 13 lots. It could, it could potentially be more than 13 lots, but the development plan that I developed was 13 lots. We went through an estimation process, had a pre-development meeting. At, by the time of the pre-development meeting, it was becoming clear that it was going to be marginal for me in terms of cost to develop. After the meeting, there was some, or during the meeting and after, there was some indication there might be some reconsideration from water. A few days later, we came up with a preliminary plan with five lots or six lots with the idea of a buffer on the corner that was within that 200-foot connection to the sewer and floated that out to representative that was at the, at the meeting, at the pre-development meeting from CCW. And after a few days, there was an indication that the higher-ups quote would go along with that if the Health Department approved septic tank. And Andrea Fraser at that point was copied in on the email and she indicated that a Level 3 soil analysis mapping would have to be done of the property and, and that there was some, some availability or space that for hardship in terms of if it was not financially feasible to connect to sewer. I went back to planning and zoning at that point to, to Director Sterling and just kind of explained what was going on and the indication we were getting and just wanted to make sure before I moved forward and spent additional funds and time and effort and made the application that if, if the coast was clear, if there was other obstacles I might run into. And he took a few, a couple of days and came back and said he thought, he thought things were good. And so at that point, I got a Level 3 soil analysis. I presented the financial feasibility. The $155,000 was the cost of getting a sewer line onto the property to service the property. When we did the, when we did the R2 development plan, roughly, that was rough, it's about $7,500 estimation per lot to do septic tanks. So that's 37.5 versus roughly 150. That was presented to, to the Health Department, to Andrea, along with the soil analysis, which indicated that we could, that we would be able to put on typical chamber septic systems. She approved that. I had, in the meantime, made my application. I guess it was a few days, the Friday before the zoning meeting, it was, I got a call from, from Director Sterling saying that it was, that we're going to recommend disapproval based on that there was a tributary of Reed Creek on the adjacent property at Forest Drive. And it's the corner of Forest Drive and Day Road and that the Reed Creek was an impaired creek. Scott mentioned something just very quickly about fecal matter in a pond that was downstream somewhere. There are several ponds further down Day Road and there's pasture land, stables, horses, animals. My, my thinking, that was all the information I had gotten and that's the first I'd heard about that at that point. It is, you know, my feeling that the fecal matter probably is coming from the water runoff rather than, rather, rather than underground. But anyway, the, for me, it, it may not be feasible to do this. I'll certainly take another look at it once the dust settles, but someone, someone will develop this property. I mean, time, particularly now that it's out, that, that it's available. Thank you for your time. Any questions?
Tommy Norris? State your name and address for the record and please take five minutes.
My name is Tommy Norris and I reside at 321 Summer Place, Martinis. And it is, I'm directly across the street from this property, 4136 Day Road, the six and a half acres. And the property is between Summer Place and Forest Drive, fronted by Day Road. I'm speaking for the 52 signers of the petition that I submitted to the commissioners. These signers are residents of Day Road, Summer Place, Forest Drive, and Fair Oaks. We would like to keep our neighborhood as close as possible to what it is and what it has been all these years. Large acreage wooded lots. If you've never been back in there, people that come visit, sometimes they, they say, wow, I didn't even realize this was here. And that's, we say that's why we like it so much. And of course, that's why we want to keep it that way. There are homes with, there are, there are homes with over, there are, there are homes, multiple homes with one, over one acre, five with over two acres, three with over three acres, one with over four acres, one with over seven acres, one with 16 acres, and one with over 30 acres between Hardy Road and Day Road. Many of the residents have been here a long time because we like the way it is. The area was developed over 50 years ago. Some of the residents have been there since then and actually knew Mr. and Mrs. Day. We have neighbors that have been here for 20, 25, 30, 35, 40, and even 50 years. We realize that this six and a half acres will be developed. Five homes on one-acre lots is what Mr. Lewis has proposed. And we believe that that is his intention and that he will carry out that project as, as he stated. We certainly are against, we are against Plan B, 13 homes. That, that's not what our area has ever been and, and it would not fit in with what it is or what residents around there want it to be. Plan C, the third option, like, like Al, Al Dempsey said at the county, the planning meeting, are we, are you willing to take a chance on 13 houses? I'm, I don't think we are, as the signers of this petition, willing to take that chance. And although Plan C, the third option, sounds great, one or two houses, I don't think, I don't think we're willing to take a chance on that either because it's very unlikely that that would happen. If, if it ever did, it'd be very unlikely. So we are, we are recommending that you approve the rezoning from R2 to R1. To have the lot, the one-acre lots, five homes, because 13 would just not fit in, to, to address the issue about the creek. I'm not, I'm not in favor of contaminating any, any property, public, private. I spoke to a, in, civil engineer today and his opinion was that properly installed and maintained septic's tank is not a danger to contaminate any property. So we are asking that you approve the rezoning. Thank you.
Matt, if it's, if this zoning is approved, it is limited to five homes, correct?
It'll be limited to the R1 requirement. So his plan is five, but if they follow lot sizes and they're able to sneak a one or two more in there, but they'll have to follow the standard county code for R1 lot unless, put a condition on at the states, they will be limited to the five lots or, leave it six lots, five with a, five houses, one open space? You have a page 158 in your packet, layout with the five billable lots with the one open space lot. 158 in my packet.
Can approve, prove it with the limiting to five, however that would be. Motion is?
Half a mic constituents, three. Motion, approve the request, zoning from R2 to R1, property located, expand, parcel zero. Lots would one, buffer lot.
Any other questions? All in favor, raise your right hand. Carries. Who matters tonight?
Legal matters.
Quest for review by the public comments. Being one executive session item, which I believe we can deal with right here and now. Make a motion to approve.
Second?
This puts it at 20% through with this project acquisitions. Begging progress.
Motion is second on the floor. All in favor, raise your right hand. Carries. There's only one more motion we need to make.
Make a motion to adjourn.
All in favor, raise your right hand. We are adjourned.